Collaborative spirit that you all demonstrate every month as we move the city forward. Your influence and sound judgment have helped to pave the way for where for the Inglewood that we see today, and your continued efforts will allow us to continue to move Inglewood to the next level. And so we would ask really quickly before we begin the meeting, if we can take a few minutes to step over to the stage and just take a break, a brief photo, and then we can begin the festivities for this evening, if you're okay with that chair.
Um, yes, I am okay with that.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, here everybody in front say next level on three, one, two, three.
Next level.
All right. Chairman, and if you don't mind, just one more quick announcement. We're gonna get you out of here. I know we got a long night, but I know, I know a lot of the members in the, in the audience were wondering what is the next level. The next level is our impending comprehensive general plan update. And with the, the work that the commission is doing as well as staff, and hopefully your input will allow us to prepare a document that represents the city of Inglewood and become a north star for where we, where we want to see the city of Inglewood go over the next 25 years. And so on September 14th, we'll be having a, a community open house here at City Hall in the community room, and we would invite all of you to come out and participate and share your insight as to where you would like to see Inglewood go in the future. So thank you for your time, and that concludes staff comments.
What time is, what time would it be?
Great question. So we have a, an English session from 10 to 12, and a Spanish session from 1 to 3, and that's Saturday, September 14th, in the community room here at City Hall. We have flyers available on our website. They'll be posted throughout the city, and there's a QR code also available on the flyer we have at the public table that will give you direct access to our website where you can get further information.
You say that information's on our website?
It is. Nextlevelinglewood.com.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like to open it up. Public comments, anyone wishing to address the planning commission on any items on the agenda except for the public, except for public hearing may do so at this time. Seeing, hearing none, we're gonna close this segment, and we're gonna start off. I need an approval on our minutes for August 7th, 2024.
Excuse me, excuse me, Chair. Really quickly, we want to just check downstairs to make sure that anyone down here.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anyone who wants, wishing to address the commission on any items on the agenda except for the public hearing in community room A, you can do so at this time. Just step to the mic, I think the camera's on. Okay. Seeing, hearing none, we're gonna close this segment. At this point, I'd like to get an approval on the minutes for August 7th, 2024.
Motion approved minutes for August 7th, 2024.
Second.
This is properly moved in second. We call for any questions. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Springs.
Aye. For the public hearing, we're gonna go with the item 6A first, Madam Secretary, and then we'll go to item 7B.
Item 6A, a public hearing to consider an application by Natalie Ribero for special use permit number 24-00011 to allow the onsite sale of distilled spirits and outdoor dining in an approximately 2,232 square foot, one-story commercial tenant space that is part of a multiple-tenant mixed-use development on an approximately 2.77-acre MU-1-zone property at 201 North Market Street.
Excuse me, Chairman. I apologize. We're having a slight technical difficulty downstairs in the community room. Just if you can give me two minutes to look into that, I apologize.
Okay, so we're gonna take a two-minute, two minutes. We'll give you three. Mr. Mike, Mr. Penn, is the, some of these agendas downstairs?
I know.
So in accordance with Murphy's Law, we, we are having some audio issues downstairs, and so we have those that came down, that went down to the community room, we're gonna come and join us, and we'll, we'll bring some chairs up here for them to participate in the meeting. So, yeah, I apologize for the delay.
Okay, so we're gonna get started. Okay, thank you for being patient with us. You know, modern technology is something. Years ago, we didn't have this problem. Are you gonna be waiting on some chairs, Mr. McCombi? Okay.
All right, Chairman. The file is present. Notice and time has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff has received no written communication on this item, and Assistant Planner Sean May is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. And next slide. The subject site for this special use permit is located at 201 North Market Street and is zoned TOD mixed-use 1. Next slide. The property is located on the northwest corner of Market Street and Regent Street with commercial uses to the north, south, and east, with residential uses under construction to the west. Next slide. The subject site is an existing six-story, multiple-tenant, mixed-use building. A certificate of occupancy was issued on March 23rd, 2023. The building complies with all TOD development standards, including parking. The proposed restaurant will occupy the tenant space and courtyard at the southeast of the subject site. Next slide. The restaurant occupies approximately 2,200 square feet, and the proposed outdoor dining will take place in the approximately 3,100-square-foot courtyard directly in front of the restaurant. The applicant is proposing a restaurant and bar with the sale of distilled spirits for onsite consumption and outdoor dining. The restaurant proposes to serve classic Americana fare, which features a full menu of appetizers, burgers, and steaks with drink options including beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The proposed hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM daily. The restaurant reopens for dinner service at 5:00 PM and has extended hours on Friday and Saturday. These hours of, of operation fall in line with similar fine dining establishments. The applicant proposes to employ one unarmed security guard during the dinner services, and the number and location of interior and exterior monitoring cameras will be determined during the site plan review process. Next slide. These renderings are an example of the interior of the proposed restaurant. Next slide. ABC allows two onsite sale license, licenses for this census tract. There are currently 16 onsite sale licenses. Therefore, the applicant must provide PCN findings. The applicant states that the proposed sale of distilled spirits will fulfill a community need for high-quality dining with alcohol service and aid further economic revitalization of Market Street by creating employment opportunities. Next slide. This picture shows the location of the proposed outdoor dining. The outdoor dining will be contained to the area shown and will not extend past the existing landscaped area. Next slide. As condition, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed project is consistent with the downtown TOD and general plan designation, as well as the strategies and goals of the city's active transportation plan and energy and climate action plan, and is exempt from further environmental review. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions the commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna open up questions for you. We're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler.
No questions for staff, Chair, the applicant.
Commissioner Rice.
I just wanted to clarify or verify whether or not the outside dining impeded into the public right-of-way, or is it on the, on property?
It's all contained on the, it's not in any of the public right-of-way, it's all contained on private property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trejo.
Better? The slide that had a tree where you were showing the outdoor dining area, is that, is that public property or private property?
That is private property, that is on the subject site. So the public right-of-way starts at the sidewalk and extends outside of this landscape area, so this is all contained on private property.
I see a tree, but will there be landscaping there? Is there a proposed plan for landscaping?
The applicant has proposed California native plants and olive trees as well.
Okay, sir, there will be a landscaping plan attached to the file?
During the site plan review process, yes.
Okay, because I don't want, just see a tree. I'd like to see more green. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Uh, no questions at this time. I'll reserve mine for the applicant.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, I may have, these questions may be directed to staff, it's in regards to the Census Track approval of alcohol use in Census Track and the crime statistics, and that'll be on page number, don't know. Five? If you look at the crime rate on page five, based upon 2021, 2022, and 2023, and then if you see 2021 for homicides, you see what it is in 2021, and then again in 23, all the way down to get to assaults. If you look at 2023 and 2020, I'm sorry, 2021, it, it had actually come up considerably from 2021 to 2023. Now, by this being outside dining, the likelihood of something happening has somewhat risen a little bit. My question would be, is it possible for us to get, I do know I read that we have one security during that shift, but is it possible that we can employ the Inglewood Police Department on foot patrol for that particular area? Could that be a consideration?
During the site plan review process, we would require the applicant to consult with IPD to ensure that the design is, meets kind of a accepted review, which is basically ensuring that there's adequate protection, police protection, and/or the site is designed in a manner that would optimize public safety for the, the dine, the, the guests that are dining in at the restaurant. So there would be some consultation with IPD. We could request, you know, additional foot traffic, and you could also condition additional security during certain hours of operation of the business as well.
As you well know, that security is only responsible for the private property section, segment. Now, as you well know, we have other things on our, on our agenda that will entail on Market Street itself, so by employing foot patrol for that entire area, that would, I think that would be a great idea. So will we talk to city council in regards to that, or could we get you and Mr. Jackson?
Absolutely, absolutely. We will reach out to IPD and have a conversation as to how we could potentially increase foot patrol or police presence along Market Street during certain hours of operation of these, these proposed businesses that are gonna be coming online here in the city. Not sure what the, the, the standard operating procedures are for the department and what their protocols are, so I can't really speak to that specifically, but I can assure you that we could have a conversation with them to see if we were able to work closely together to ensure public safety.
Could that be a condition?
No, I don't think we could condition that, sir.
Excuse me.
So Chairman, what you're asking for would be something for the city to consider, not for the permit. It would be the city's, the police chief would decide, the rollout.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. If the applicant is here, go to the mic in the back and tell us a bit, tell us about your project, and why we should approve this particular project, and how will it be beneficial to our community? Please give us your name. So. Angel, could you go and help her?
Hi, can you hear me better?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Natalia Ribero. I'm here on behalf of ownership, the designer of the project and applicant. Good evening. Our vision for this project is to create a dynamic and welcoming space and transform...
Excuse me, just one moment. If you can kinda just pretend that you're a rock star, and then put your hands around the mic like this, that way?
Yeah, is this better? I can also project if that's easier.
Yes, thank you.
What I was saying was, our vision for this project is to create a dynamic and welcoming space in a vibrant venue. The addition of the bar will elevate an experience for families in the community. We all know that Inglewood is already deeply rooted in history, and we'd like to add to enhance the community by adding a new space for people to come to and to be a part of the community. I don't really know what else to say, if there are some specific questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, very good. We're gonna open up questions for you.
Sure.
We're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize, I couldn't hear your name, so I didn't...
My name is Natalia.
Miss, Natalia, thank you.
Natalia Ribero, yes.
I wanted to start with, this is a restaurant, so are you in the rest, how long have you been in the restaurant business?
Well, counting my waitressing days, it's been about 20 years, so I've been in the restaurant business for a really long time. I've been working for a design-build company for the last 10 years. We've designed and built several restaurants in the LA area and nationally as well. So I've been working this, in this industry for a very long time now.
Do you have any other restaurants in the area?
We actually are working on a project on Slauson right now. We're in final stages for that. That should be opening in the next couple of months, actually.
Okay, thank you. I saw, well, they pretty much addressed the security issue, so I'm gonna pass on that. I wasn't able to tell, what is the park, is there parking capacity? I heard them mention parking, but I couldn't tell.
Yes, there's parking in the building. It's a brand-new subterranean parking that is shared between the tenants and all the commercial spaces on the ground level.
So about how many extra spaces, because you've got residents?
Parking lot is, has over 100 spaces, so there's plenty of parking, and there's also street parking along the, the front of the building.
Okay, I think I'm fine for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. McCombi, you had a question? I see you taking the mic.
Just, just wanna, just wanna clarify, the, the proposed project was developed, well, this project was developed with 469 parking spaces, and of, of those 469, 113 were allotted for the commercial uses, uses within the mixed-use development. And so what's being proposed will not trigger any additional parking required, and I think at, at this time, the use would meet the parking standard and probably, you know, surpass what is required.
Besides the residential tenants, there are commercial tenants there as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
This is one of the lease-ups of the, of the mixed-use component of this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
This is your first Weaver's Restaurant?
But I was getting on everybody about having their mic, and you were the one of the commissioners, and you having yours go off.
What happened was everything went off, and then I pulled my earpiece off, and I picked up everything. So good job. Anyway, give me a cheer. The, this is your first Weaver's Restaurant?
It is, but I can hand off the microphone to the owner if he wants to speak towards his experience and businesses as well.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I'm Matt Weaver, and I'm here with my boss, or my wife Hillary, and we're excited to be here, so I'd love to answer any question. We've been coming down here for three years. I'm always walking around the neighborhood, and we're just excited to get this open. We have a couple of other restaurants in LA, we have a sushi restaurant in the valley and a wine bar, and we also have a music venue in Hollywood called The Bourbon Room. So I don't know if anybody's been there, but we live kind of a dual life. We, we produce Broadway, and we're also now in the, in the hospitality business, and we could not be more excited here. We're gonna bank in Inglewood, we're gonna hire in Inglewood, and like, I almost feel like we're too late, because I feel like Inglewood is exploding, but you know, we're gonna be open within nine months, and we couldn't be more excited. But this is, to answer your question, this, this is the first. We think there could be more, but this is the first Weaver's.
I assure you, you are not too late. You're right on time.
No, no, I'm so excited, I wish we were open a year ago, but I know.
And we have another brewery here in town, Three Weaver's, no relation to Three Weaver's.
No, and we're not a brewery. Our original concept was gonna be Inglewood Brewery. We're gonna have beers, but we're, we're not, we're not a brewery.
Brought that up because you're gonna have that question asked a thousand times, probably.
Yeah, what I'd love to do is actually meet someone who knows anybody behind Crowns and Hops, because I would love to be able to sell that beer. I don't know if anybody knows, but I think that's brewed at Weaver's as well, Three Weaver's.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes, looking at, first off, welcome to the city of Inglewood.
Thank you.
And it's happy to hear, I'm happy to hear that you're really excited about becoming part of, of Inglewood, part of the Inglewood family. about becoming part of, of Inglewood, part of the Inglewood family. The, looking at the slide again, can you tell me what your lighting is going to be like for outdoor dining?
Sure, I'll let Natalia speak to that.
We're gonna do. See in front of the tree there.
I didn't catch the tail end of it because you, you were.
Over the seating as well as landscape lighting in the trees and in the landscaping that we're planning for in the planters along the, both sides of the public areas or facing the public right of way.
Okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Really like this. Sorry, was there another question?
Yes, Commissioner Trejo. I'm sorry. Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
I love your design. When I first saw it, I thought it was a great use, a great mixture of modern and tradition, brings in a coziness. I'm curious, will you have private rooms for private events for parties, maybe bigger than 14 or 15 people?
So we are planning a private dining room and the space is well equipped to have private parties if someone wanted to do the whole restaurant, so yes.
Okay, and I noticed a trend in, in going to certain restaurants, particularly in downtown LA, they're having limits as to how long you can dine. Are you like two hours, maybe two and a half hours? Will that be something that you guys will implement as well? Good, okay.
No, I don't think that that's the plan. I think the idea is for people to come and enjoy and spend some time and really get to be a part of the community and get to know each other and get to know the owners and the people who work there. So there wouldn't be a time limit on, on people staying, no.
Oh, good. And then lastly, are you thinking about considering valet parking just as a convenience or offer to the guests?
You know, you know what? I'd be open to suggestions, so I don't know if. Plenty of parking, I think, in the building, but I, I would ask everybody's opinion. You think we need it, we'd be open to it. You know, or maybe on certain hours. But if that's something you guys would require, we wouldn't be against it if it makes it easier for the customers.
And it's also a, a safety factor when you have valet parking. So it's something that I think you should think about and consider.
If, if that provides more safety for people, we'll, we'll always do it. So we, we've been in Hollywood for five years. I don't know if you guys have been on Hollywood and Ivar. So we're, we're all about safety.
Thank you, I have no further questions, Chair, thank you.
And we do have a Mayor Butts Burger on the menu. I just wanted.
Oh, really?
Just wanted to let everybody know that. It's, our chef's been working on it, it's great.
I was just going, I was just going to ask if you would be amenable to having a meal named after Inglewood, like the Inglewood Special.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we're not outsiders, we want to be insiders here. This is a family business, our kids are gonna work there. And we're not just paying lip service here and we're gonna turn around and do something different. So yeah, we'd be totally open to that.
Okay, will you be having a dress code?
A dress code? I don't think so. I mean, I think it'll be the type of place where you sort of know, but it, it's not gonna be fancy, it's gonna be nice. I think families can go there, you can go on a date there, you can go for drinks there. We're really excited about the patio. You know, I drive around the neighborhood a lot and, you know, I don't see any place where people can congregate and have. I mean, we, by the way, I love the wood, I love Dulons, I'll eat there over my restaurant any day. But we don't see a great like outdoor cocktail place and so we're really excited about that. And that doesn't mean DJ and loud music and bottle service and all that, but just a place to have a cocktail Friday at 6 o'clock, you know? Yeah, watch the games. We're, we're gonna have a couple of TVs. It's not gonna be a sports bar, but we'll probably have TVs in there. We're obviously huge, you know, fans of all the teams in the area.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you. The question I have for you would be, once you enter the parking lot, the structure down, can you enter the restaurant from the parking lot? Or do you have to come around to Market to enter the, the restaurant?
So there is an entrance from the parking lot into essentially the private hallway that leads into the public right of way. So you'd have to not necessarily exit, but you'd walk out of the parking lot, up some stairs and then the restaurant. Yeah, if you pull up, if you pull up the floor plan, I can show you too where, where the entrance. Okay, so you see on the bottom left there, there is a set of stairs that comes from the parking lot and you go through that double door and hang right and then you'd be at the entrance.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple more questions.
Sure.
We're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler, you have another question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Okay, Natalie, I do see the stairs now. What about accessibility? If someone, wheelchairs, how would they?
Sure, there is a lift, I believe, also from that stair access that goes onto the public right of way also.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any final questions, Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Trejo?
No further questions.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No further questions, thank you.
Okay. At this point, we'd like to open it up for anyone that's for or against this particular project. If you can go to the mic, give us your name and tell us either you're for or against the project. You only have one minute for that?
I'm for the project.
And if you're against it, I'll give you a discount. So, yeah, no, just joking.
Okay, seeing, hearing none, we're gonna close this segment. Any final questions from the commissioners? If none.
I have a comment.
Okay, comment?
I know the crime statistics were brought up and looking at it in black and white, it, it does look alarming to see how high the crime statistics are and the number of ABC licenses there are. However, I really think that with more pedestrian activity that, that this type of restaurant is going to bring and others that may be there. But right now, we're talking about this one. More pedestrian activity will really, really help reduce the crime activity. So I looked at it and I thought about it and I thought, no, something like this is really gonna help the area. It's gonna help the city, but I, I really think it's gonna reduce crime activity.
Okay, thank you. All right. We've heard all the questions, we've heard all the comments. Is there a motion on the floor, please?
I move approval. I move that the Planning Commission approve SUP 24-00011. And we affirm the categorical exemption EACE 2024-103, adopt the resolution approving SUP 2400011, adding two conditions. One, that a meal be on the menu named Inglewood Special. That's a condition. And that the owners discuss with, with staff during site plan review the potential or the possibility of increasing the number of security guards in the evening when there are events that will be extra boisterous or emotional or as, as the events take place, so that they be willing to increase security guards.
Second.
Okay, is the property moved in second? We call for any questions on the motion?
I need to add an additional condition.
Okay, we had a second on that, on your motion. So we have to withdraw the second. So Commissioner Trejo wants to add another condition? You made the second?
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Okay, adding three conditions. The two that I mentioned and the third one would be a one-year review that you come back and let us know how things are going because that gives, I think, the commission an opportunity to see how well our conditions are working. So it kind of benefits both of us, so adding a one-year review.
Second.
Okay, now we have a second. Call for any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Mr. McCumbbo? Is there any appeal process?
Yes, Chair. According to the IMC, anyone may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission on this matter. The appeal period, the appeal must be filed within the 20 days of the notice of the decision and must be filed with a written notice of appeal as well as a $942 appeal fee.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, you have your project. We look forward to coming in, having a nice rare steak.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 7B.
Item 7B, a non-public hearing to consider an application by Steve Cotton to allow an approximately 418 square foot mural on an existing 7,500 square foot, multiple tenant, commercial building on an approximately 8,500 square foot C2 zone property at 900 North La Brea Avenue.
Chairman, the file is present and notice is not required for design review. An assistant planner, Angel Leon Martel, is available to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the Planning Commission. Next slide. The subject site for this design review is located at 900 North La Brea Avenue and has a commercial slash residential general plan land use designation with C2 general commercial zoning. Next slide. The property is currently developed as a multi-tenant retail building. Property is located at the northeast corner of La Brea Avenue and Plymouth Street with neighboring commercial and institutional uses. The applicant is proposing an approximately 418 square foot onsite mural. Next slide. The existing clothing brand, Inglewood Clothing Line, is proposing the mural. It's located along an approximately 62-foot wide tenant facade. The building wall faces south towards Plymouth Street. Next slide, please. The mural represents the city of champions. The mural includes city-related logos and insignias and inspiration for musical and athletic profiles such as the Los Angeles Rams, Grammy-nominated musician D Smoke and basketball great Kobe Bryant. The existing mural has already been painted. This is a picture of how it looks like now and the applicant would like to keep the mural and seeks approval from the commission. Next slide. Findings have been made that the project is in accordance with design review standards. The project is consistent with the goal of the city's active transportation plan and the Inglewood Energy and Climate Action Plan. The proposed project is consistent with the commercial and residential land use designation and is exempt from further environmental review. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any of the questions the commission might have. The applicant is also present tonight and available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Open up questions for you, Commissioner Fowler?
No questions for staff, the applicants.
Commissioner Rice?
Next slide, please.
Commissioner Trejo?
Well, I'll ask this of staff, I'm not sure if you'll be able to, to answer. Is, is, did they use anti-graffiti type paint on the mural?
I'll have to double check that with the applicant.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions, thank you.
I reserve my questions for the applicant. If the applicant is here, can you go to the mic and tell us about your project?
KD, can we have the next slide, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Cotton. I was born and raised here in Inglewood, California, and I am the owner of the Inglewood Souvenir Shop. And I am the owner of the Inglewood Souvenir Shop. A few years ago, when the Rams won the Super Bowl here, we decided to put up a mural on the side of our building so that people knew where we were. When people come to the city of Inglewood, their first stop is to come by and take a picture on our mural and then they come upstairs to get souvenirs. Whenever the Rams, Chargers or Clippers have an event or a concert, we're hot, we're booming. People are coming by our souvenir shop to get souvenirs to say they went to Inglewood, California. And Commissioner Trejo, I did want to let you know we did not use anti-graffiti paint, but we did put a coat on top of it that will help in case we have any graffiti. Before we put this mural up, that wall got lots of graffiti on it. So ever since we put this mural up, we have not had any problems. We went across the street to the school, Wilder Preparatory, and spoke to the principal and the owner and they were really on board with us putting up a mural. That mural has deterred graffiti and has been nothing but positive feedback on the community.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're gonna. We're gonna open up for questions for you, sir? We're gonna start with Commissioner Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Cotton, excellent presentation. I did have the question, though, about maintaining the beauty of that mural and I could see where it would be very popular, which I don't mind people going back to Europe and saying, I'm talking about Inglewood, California, you have to go there. So, thank you. You said you put a coating. My only condition would be that it remained as beautiful as it looks in the slide. So thank you.
Absolutely, I think it's important every few years that we do a touch-up on it because weather does take a toll on the mural. We want to keep it looking real good so that people can come and take their picture on the wall.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rice?
Cotton, I'm always challenged with the process and how things happen sometimes, but your presentation basically saved your mural and I appreciate you for it. No further questions, Chair.
Commissioner Trejo?
I'm happy to hear that you have a coating on there and that, that it has deterred graffiti. And it is a tribute to the city of Inglewood and, and like Commissioner Fowler said, it's great when people come and get souvenirs and say, you know, I was, I was in Inglewood. So anything, the important thing, of course, is to maintain it and the beauty of it be maintained. And is it sort of asking you and sort of asking the staff the condition to have maintenance on it every two years? Is it in the conditions? Otherwise, I'll include it or whoever makes the decision.
No, it is not.
There, there is a, there is a condition that requires ongoing maintenance for signage, but there is not a timestamp, you know, every year or two. If you would like for, for that to be added, we could, but.
Mr. Cotton, would you be amenable to, are including a condition that gives it a time that every two years touch-ups or maintenance be done on the mural?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Hi, hi, Mr. Cotton. I've seen the mural and it's very nice. I was very pleased when I saw it. And I really don't have anything else to say other than excellent job. Who, who was the artist, by the way?
We got an artist named Seishamura and he teamed up with a gentleman named Shlomi. Two artists, two local artists here from Los Angeles.
Yeah, oh, and how long did it take them to do this?
The mural took about three days.
Oh, wow.
Right after the Rams won the Super Bowl, we got to work and brought lots of people, lots of traffic to our storefront. It's good for our local business.
Yes, yes. Your, your Inglewood wear is on, on point, so. Okay, I have no further questions.
I have no questions either. I did see the mural. I, I don't have a question, maybe a comment. I see you have Kobe there. But he's a Los Angeles Laker, which, you know, I'm a Laker fan as well, don't get me wrong. No, Kobe never played at the Forum. Wait a minute now, hold on, people. Hold on a minute now, don't jump on me. I'm, the only reason I say that is because we have the Clippers here and we don't see the, anyone representing the Clippers. So when you do your touch-up in a year, if you can put maybe Kareem or change some of the, you know. But I did see the mural, I think it's a wonderful. of the, you know, but I did see the mural, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful, did a good job, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, there is no open comments on this from the general public because it's not a public hearing, so at this time, we need a, a motion?
Motion. I recommend that the Planning Commission affirm the categorical exemption E A C E two zero two four one zero seven and adopt the resolution approving D R two four dash zero 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 three one and add the condition to maintain and do necessary touch-ups every two years.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Call for any questions?
Your motion?
Yes. There is a, there is a number off on your motion, so we just take the motion. Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Call for any questions, hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Got your mural, thank you sir.
Uh, really, really quick, Chairman, Chairman.
Uh, before we leave, sir, Mr. Cotton?
Mr. Cotton?
There's um, an appeal process.
Mr. Cotton?
Mr. Cotton, there's an appeal process.
Congratulations, Mr. Cotton. But just real quick, um, just to let you know that the applicant may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission on this matter. The appeal must be filed, I mean, just in case you wanted to revoke the approval you just got. Um, the appeal must be filed within ten days of the notice of the, of the decision and shall be made by filing a written notice along with an appeal fee of three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Congratulations.
Thank you for being a district one.
Okay, before I, we go on to our next item, I'm gonna look up Kobe playing in the Forum.
Oh no.
I am, seriously.
Who's the agenda, Mr. Chair?
But I, I'll have that information at the end of the, okay. Madam Secretary?
Okay, item six B, uh, public hearing to consider an application by Keokia Childress for special use permit number twenty-four dash zero 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 one five to allow the onsite sale of distilled spirits and live entertainment in an existing two-story multiple tenant, eight, multiple tenant, eight thousand three hundred twenty square foot commercial building on an approximately eight thousand six hundred twenty-five square foot H C historic core zone property at two zero one South Market Street.
Chairman, the file is present and notice and time has been given in the form of matter as required by law. Staff has not received any written communication on this matter, and Assistant Planner Angel Leon, Leon Martel is back to do a short staff presentation.
Okay. Mr.?
Items? Items, uh, six B, C, D, and seven A, I'm gonna accuse myself of a conduct, looked of interest contract for.
Good evening Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site for this special use permit is located within downtown Inglewood TOD general plan area and is zoned historic core. Next slide. The property is located on the southwest corner of Manchester Boulevard and Market Street with commercial uses to the north, south, east, and west. The proposal is for a new restaurant that will occupy an existing approximately forty-three hundred square foot tenant suite along the north portion of the existing building. Next slide please. Oh no, that's fine. The applicant is seeking approval for onsite sale of distilled spirits and live entertainment for a proposed restaurant named Addis. The menu consists of brunch-style cold food kitchen items such as paninis, salads, wraps, quesadillas, juices, teas, kombucha, and coffee. Addis is proposed to be a casual lounge which can serve individuals looking for a quiet place to work during the day to an evening venue where friends may sit down for, sit down for a drink and enjoy R and B or live jazz in the evening hours. Next slide. The hours of operation are from eight AM to one AM, Sunday through Saturday. Alcohol will only be served between the hours of one PM and one AM as conditioned. Live entertainment will take place on the seventy-five square foot stage shown on the screen in blue. Live entertainment includes DJ, amplified music performances from local, from local jazz acts. Live entertainment will be confined to the restaurant interior and will typically take place in the afternoon hours. The selected areas on the screen are the entry highlighted in dark blue, bar area in teal, stage area in blue, and the VIP area in green. Security guards will be present daily and a strict dress code will be implemented, and the project is conditioned to provide interior and exterior cameras. Exact number will be determined during site plan review. Next slide. The second floor plan consists of a mezzanine level mainly for storage and additional bathrooms for the restaurant. Next slide. ABC allows two onsite, onsite sale licenses for the census tract. There are currently sixteen onsite sale licenses. The applicant has submitted a PCN letter for the commission's review and approval. Next slide. The tenant suite is currently vacant. The images above show the existing conditions with roll-up security doors. Next slide. The interior will be remodeled to include interior lighting, new wall finishes, furniture, floors, and paint. Here we can see the entry seating area on the left picture of what the seating will look like, and the VIP area to the right, and how it'll look like as well. The exterior is shown at the bottom with the removal of the security gates and new paint. Next slide. As conditioned, the proposed project will serve as, as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will continue to be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and compatible with the downtown TOD goals. This project is consistent with the goals of the city's active transportation plan and the Inglewood Energy and Climate Action Plan. The project is consistent with the downtown TOD land use design guidelines, and a categorical exemption has been filed. The project is exempt from further environmental review. Next slide. This concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions the commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer your questions, thank you.
All right, thank you Angel. We're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler, any questions?
No questions for staff, applicants there.
Commissioner Trejo?
Can you, uh, thank you Angel, uh, can you show me the, the slide again that shows the building?
Exeter?
Yeah.
Existing, yeah.
What is the, oh, there's two pictures. What is the pink that I'm looking at on the left?
Here, that is actually a corner view, so it's kinda looking diagonally from Manchester and, I mean, Mark, yeah, Manch, Manchester and Market. So it's just right underneath the, like, the, the canopy, yeah.
What is the gray on the, on the left side? The gray part, that looks, is it a trash can or?
Roll-up doors.
There.
Doors?
This?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, those are the roll-up doors I mentioned.
Wow. Okay, so, uh, tell me again, you said it's going to be painted?
The ex, yeah, so the exterior is gonna be painted and the roll-up doors are to be removed. Can you go to the next slide?
What, what kind of doors are we looking at?
Go to, next slide please, it's, it's glazing, so.
Okay, that, the, what I'm looking at is that door there, it's like a glass tempered glass or something? Yeah, that's quite an improvement, I think it will look much better. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions, I'll save mine for the applicant, thank you.
Um, my only question that I have for you, the building next to you, the building or the structure or the tenant next door is the shack, what, can you bring up that picture again?
Yes.
Yes.
So Emma's is part of this building as well as the Nile.
Okay, so, is that, because I, I noticed there, it's eighty-three hundred and twenty square feet, is that including that little shack?
Yeah, Emma's and the Nile, together, combined with the, with the proposed Addis restaurant, that's, that makes up that eighty-three hundred.
Okay, so we're looking at the Nile?
Mm-hmm.
Is part of this eighty-three?
Yes. As well as the mezzanine area.
Okay, so wait, I do have a question, it's there.
So the Nile is already complete?
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that? So, are we talking about removing any walls or anything of that nature? Or this, will you be able to go into the Nile from this particular structure?
No, all it is is um, improving the existing, the existing bill, the existing tenant suite. So that's all laid out, the walls are laid out, um, all it is is like finishes, furniture, lighting, um, maybe some kitchen, there's a new kitchen, um, fixtures and things like that.
It's, it's a separate use altogether, so there's no, there's no um, um, way, point of entry from one, from Addis to the Nile?
But you, you indicated to us that according to this, it says it's approximately eighty-three hundred and twenty square feet.
Two sep, three separate tenant spaces, so there, there are three separate, three separate tenant spaces within one multi-tenant building.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood, thank you. Thank you Angel. Okay, if, do you have another question, Commissioner? All right, if the applicant is here, take the mic in the back and tell us your name and tell us about your project, have us... Are you related to the Niles? Are you the brother?
Good evening commissioners, as well as the staff on the dais, my name is Keokia Childress, applicant, as well as a operational consultant for the Addis project. What we envision for the Addis is a cafe lounge with a cultural, being a cultural beacon for the city where we can derive a rich diversity for our community to celebrate and have exhibits of private, of art, fashion shows, cultural events, music, and general networking. So by providing a welcoming environment for all, we aim to foster a stronger connection within our community, uh, offering a place where people can come, gather together, share ideas, and create lasting memories. We are excited to bring to the amazing city of Inglewood, the next level Inglewood, uh, a, a space where you can come in, meet with other people, and realize that the only thing that has changed in the city of Inglewood is everything except the people. If you have any questions, I have the owners here, and I'll be able to answer any operational questions.
Okay, very good, thank you. Are we gonna open up questions for you? Commissioner Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Ms. Childress, um, my first question has to do, since the proximity of the Nile, uh, and is it Addis, am I saying that correct?
Yes, Addis.
Okay, good. Um, it's sound. I guess, I pass the Nile and I can hear the music from my car, and you're talking about staying open till one AM in the morning, I'm just concerned about how that all is going to blend together.
Inside of the Addis, there's dual insulation, which will keep the sound down, as well as we have the sound combat for the front entrance as well.
So you won't hear the Nile and they won't hear you?
We won't bother them and they won't bother us.
I understand, that's, that's what we wanna hear. Um, my other question had to do, um, is this your first establishment?
This is not my establishment, but it is the first for the owner.
Okay, would the owners like to share a little about their business or acumen or what made them develop this idea?
Hello, my name is Betlam Walde Yorgas, I'm the owner of the Nile Bar.
Ah.
The own, I mean, the building owner, when the Phil Zirag leave, they called me and they say, "He need a tenant," just like I, just like me, he say, "Who doesn't give him no problem, who pay his bill on time." So when he say that, I say, "Okay, I'm gonna look." So I asked my brother and my cousins if they are interested of doing something. My, my brother used to have a, a restaurant on Fairfax called Addis, we are from Ethiopia, Addis means new, in Ethiopian language. So because of that, I told him, I say, "If you guys wanna open another restaurant, you guys can go ahead and do it." So that's how the whole thing starts.
Thank you for sharing that story.
Okay.
Oh, okay, did you wanna say more? I'm sorry. Okay. Don't tap past the close. Um, security, can you share with me, I didn't hear that in the presentation, what is your plan for security?
Um, so, let me introduce myself, my name is Cezanne Evans, I am part of family. Um, uh, security-wise, we do have cameras all over the building, but um, for pedestrians and um, we do, uh, we are gonna hire security for um, later hours during operational times.
And what approximately, uh, how many staff are you looking at, roughly?
Um, twelve.
Foods, including the food service?
Yes.
Okay, and did you plan to have any type of signage or landscaping? I could not see that here, is this, is this the future? I'm trying to understand. Yeah, okay. Just, did anyone of you wanna address that?
Yes, we do wanna add um, signage and um, uh, different lighting in the front of the building, we, as, if you've seen the Nile, we do have lights connected to the trees, maybe extending that over Emma's.
I meant for the restaurant, are you gonna have?
Inside?
No, 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 ou, outside, are you gonna do anything else to the exterior?
Yes, um, painting the building, changing up the shutters, and making the, the building look a lot nicer, and adding lighting and signage.
Okay, thank you for now, thank you so much.
Okay. Commissioner Trejo?
Uh, yes, um, are you doing a restaurant?
So um, phase one would basically be a um, cyber café and um, a lounge, but we propose to do a restaurant once we get the kitchen built out, but right now we're trying to propose a cold kitchen.
Okay, so you will be serving food, I guess that was a better question?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, so food will be available, uh, to accompany um, the, the, the distilled spirits or beer and wine?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Tell me your live entertainment again, describe it for me, please.
Um, just jazz events and uh, live music, so um, any type of cultural events we will host, and uh, if you wanna pull up the stage, stage can hold, and we'll have bands and stuff come in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Uh, just a couple of questions, uh, concerning the live entertainment, will it, I know it'll be local artists, will it also be well-known artists that we're familiar with in the entertainment industry?
We won't host a lot of national artists, but periodically for small live sets, we will offer that, but it'll be more, more private, private basis.
Okay, dress code, would there, will there be a dress code?
There will be a upscale dress code, uh, casual upscale.
Nice, okay.
But for later in the day, during the daytime, while it's cafe hours and you're working, we won't require a dress code.
Okay, and what can you expect, uh, if you get the, the VIP lounge? And what can you expect if you get the VIP lounge? What type of special services will be provided in that area?
So it's more of like a comfortable lounging area where people can lay back, use their computer, and then have a different type of feel other than where everybody can see you. So when the shutters go up, it's kind of open. And the VIP lounge gives you a kind of secluded feel with lounging chairs and couches.
What kind of vibe can you expect in the evenings?
Upscale, jazzy feel.
So this for grown folk, huh?
We game there.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
I have no questions at all. I, my comments at the end. At this particular point, if there's anyone for or against this particular project, you can go to the mic, give us your name. And you have one minute. So if you want to say something about the project, please go to the mic, give us your name. You have one minute, please.
Hello. Hello.
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Monte Ryan. Through my experience working with Cizana, Benny and Ms. Betty, I envision their establishment, if I could just read my notes. Addis, the cyber cafe and lounge are imagined as a cultural hub, celebrating our community with cultural events and networking opportunities, striving, sorry, sorry. Striving to provide a welcoming space for everyone, aiming to strengthen the community, Inglewood, Ingle, community ties by offering a gathering place for sharing ideals, networking, and creating enduring images and memories. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, good evening. I am Anthony Carruthers. I've worked as a lawyer in Inglewood for some time, also live in Inglewood. I frequent the Nile, I know Benny, Betty, and Cizana very, very well. I appreciate a safe space for, you know, young entrepreneurs or business people to come meet. I'm looking forward to seeing what they do with this space. Right now, it's not very pretty, but the Nile is very, very beautiful. And I look forward to see what it can do for the Inglewood market area. And I hope. Quest, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alfred Torigano, affectionately known as DJ Quest Coast. My DJ career actually started at the Market Street Bar and Grill, which is now Three and Out, right? And it was under Betty's operational control at that time. And I now frequent the Nile and have brought so many DJs and performers to the city of Inglewood. And it's starting to take that new shape that we see, right? And this is a legacy, these are legacy operators that deserve the opportunity to continue to grow with the city. And you see the next generation of business. So I love this family, I love this family business. It's a beautiful opportunity for the city of Inglewood and all of the community that live here and everybody that's going to come in trans, like be the transient folks that come for the games. I'm there for the games and the concerts all the time. We have an international crowd, so this is another way for us to entertain the guests that come into our great city. Boy that raised in the city of Inglewood and Kobe did play for three years.
Anyone else?
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin Hairston. I work security. I've been working with Cizy, Betty, and Benny. I just made two years, actually, September 2nd. There's no better people to deserve it more than them. They're definitely for the community. Every time we talk, you know, just regular having conversations, they're all about improving the community and creating jobs for other people. You know, it's not about making money for themselves. Anybody can make money any kind of way. But their main passion is about creating jobs and creating stuff for other people. So, yeah, you guys, they definitely deserve it and I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so if you're gonna speak, just go, go there, that way we'll know that you're gonna speak. That way we don't have to delay anything.
Hello. My name is Monty, Monty Jackson. I'm one of the resident DJs at the Nile Bar. I come from the Hollywood area, you know, so DJ Quest Coast, I'm kind of second off of what he said. He's one of the ones that brought me to Inglewood. I'm originally from Compton, but now I consider myself from Inglewood, you know, because the Nile Bar became my family, you know. So I like to be able to bring like my friends that come from different places like Atlanta, Georgia, you know, because I work in the music business, I'm artist relations for this, this music tech company called BPM Supreme. So when my friends come into town or when they come, you know, into town to visit, you know, our offices, I always bring them to Inglewood, you know, so I could show what Inglewood has to offer. So I'm just saying all that to let you know I'm all for this project and I'm for the city of Inglewood.
Hey, thank you.
My time yet? I'm not ready. Good evening. Hi, everyone. I am shy, but I'm up here and I'm happy to be here. My name is Bria Archer. And as a L.A. native and someone who has dedicated my life to community, youth empowerment, mental health, all those things, I stand a hundred percent behind this project. The guys, Ben, Cizy, they have supported me with so many of my own business ventures and their support and their collaboration has like pushed me forward and pushed me to do a lot of things. So I think that this, this space will be perfect for Inglewood and I think it will bring a lot of just networking, community building. It will bring diversity. And so, yeah, I'm happy to be behind this and I think that is definitely what Inglewood needs. I grew up in Inglewood, I am a HBTU alum, so I love to see stuff like this and I will, I stand ten toes behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. My name is Shaloni Ide and I live in North Inglewood. This is the first time I've come here. I've known Betty, Benny for a long time. When the Nile was opened, I was very impressed and I travel a lot. And it says a lot when I, when you travel and people are talking about Inglewood and they talk about the Nile. And I'll be sitting right down there and the people will say, he's from Inglewood. Is it true? I said, yes, I come to Inglewood and you see what we are doing in Inglewood. The lounge that they're trying to, the concept of the lounge that I saw, I was really impressed because I have people that comes, my business partners that comes into town. I would like to spend that money in Inglewood than taking them to somewhere else. And I believe the planning commission is doing a very good job to put this place together. And as a landowner in Inglewood, I really thank you for the nice job that you're doing. And I hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Hello? Hey, I'm a L.A. native, I've been living here all my life. I used to, oh, uh, mic check one, two, one, two? Okay. Hey, I'm an L.A. native, I've been living here all my life. I did a lot of community work in District Nine and over in South Central. And I can say that everyone here really supports their community. They go above and beyond for it, more than I've seen other places. And they deserve the support. I think the upcoming Olympics will be more than happy to have this place in the area. I think it's beautiful to look at, I think it's a great place for people to come. I can tell you, me being here for almost two years now, they have gone above and beyond to treat their customers with more respect than I've seen any other bar or restaurant do. And, yeah.
L.A. native, can you have your name?
Elijah Gonzalez.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close this segment. And we're gonna ask final questions from our Commissioners or any comments they may have. We'll start with Commissioner Fowler?
Just a comment. Thank you, Quest, I like that idea, legacy business. I like that, because we do have legacy business in the city. So, welcome to District One, stay there.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes, I just want to comment, knowing very well how the Nile operates and those that operate the Nile. And now having additional family members working on a project right next door. I think it's a great addition to the city of Inglewood. Again, crime statistics are really high. ABC licenses are really high. But I think, again, like I said on a previous matter that we had, that this type of project, this type of environment is going to reduce the crime that takes place because you're going to get more and more activity and you're gonna see people that really, really believe in the city and they're gonna be watching out for each other. So I thank you for considering the continued consideration in Inglewood.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Yes, I want to thank Betty for bringing, one, the Nile, two, for bringing this new business into Inglewood, particularly on Market Street, which is uplifting just the whole community, that whole strip. I really appreciate the family, me being a visitor from here, here and there to the Nile. It's always refreshing, it's always welcoming, the food is excellent, service is excellent. So I have no doubt that we'll get the same from this new business that she's about to venture on.
Okay. Okay, I, my only comments is that Betty, you did a fantastic job with the Nile. I do go to the Nile, that's one of my favorite places to go, have a good, have a good meal. I'm out of there by 9:30 because another crowd comes in at that time. But it is a nice relaxing place. The TV monitors are great, I enjoy it. I was there one night for, I think they had live entertainment. I think I got caught with the wrong group at one point. But I enjoyed it, I go there, my wife and I, we go there. Again, we, we're out by nine because, but I really, I like it. My wife had a birthday party there and Betty did a fantastic job for us, so thank you very much. I really enjoy the Nile. And I'm encouraging anyone who lives in, here in the city, you need to frequent these places because you keep it open and they, the food is great. The food is excellent. Okay, so, that's my comment. So at this point, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion, Mr. Chair. A motion to affirm the categorical exemption CEAC E 2024-104, adopting the resolution approving SUP 24-0015.
Second.
I'd like to add a condition.
Okay. Are you gonna take that second back, please?
Yes, I will take back my second.
All right.
The condition again is a one-year review.
Okay, are you accepting her condition? The person who made the motion? Commissioner Fowler?
I thought you were asking the applicant.
No, I'm asking you.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I can always go in.
And I second.
Okay. And properly moved in second, call for any questions? Hearing no questions, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Is there appeal process?
Yes, sir. According to the IMC, anyone may appeal the decision of the planning commission on this matter. The appeal must be filed within 20 days from the notice of decision and shall be made by filing a written appeal along with a $942 appeal fee.
Okay. Congratulations. We look forward to it.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna take a two, five-minute break. We're gonna take a five-minute pause as people that are here, they're gonna exit. We're gonna call this meeting to order, please? All right. How we doing? Good, how are you? Ladies and gentlemen, we calling this meeting to order, please? This meeting is called to order, please? Thank you. Okay, on the agenda for our next, Madam Secretary, please?
Number 24-00016.
Excuse me, Cynthia. That's 6C.
6C.
We're on item 6C.
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 A was good. We don't need to repeat.
We're on which one?
Is that, that's C, right?
B, yeah.
That's C.
Yeah, you said 6A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Item 6C, a public hearing to consider an application by City of Champions LLC for a special use permit number 24-00016 to allow the onsite sale of distilled spirits and live entertainment in an existing one-story, 3,000-square-foot commercial building on an approximately 38,350-square-foot C-2A zone property at 10023 South Prairie Avenue.
Chairman, the file is present and notice of time has been given in a form and matter as required by law. Staff has received no written communication regarding this matter and Planner Christine Rivera is available to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the Commission. Next slide. Next slide, please. The subject site for this special use permit is located at 123 South Prairie Avenue and is zoned airport commercial. Next slide. The property is located on the southwest corner of Century Boulevard and Prairie Avenue with commercial uses to the north, south, east, and west. The applicant is proposing a restaurant and bar with the sale of distilled spirits for onsite consumption and live entertainment. Next slide. The subject site is an existing one-story retail building on a lot with two other standalone tenant spaces. It is currently vacant. Next slide. The restaurant occupies approximately 3,000 square feet. Live entertainment will take place on an approximately 164-square-foot step-up stage. Food will be delivered by waitstaff from the mobile kitchen to the customer. No walk-up orders can be placed at the mobile kitchen. The mobile kitchen will be stationed close to the main entrance of the restaurant. The proposed hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily. The reason for the hours of operation are to provide domestic and international sports events for viewing. Most international sports events occur in the early mornings here on the West Coast. The applicant will provide security guards and security cameras. Cameras will be included in plans to the satisfaction of the Planning Division during site plan review. Next slide. The ABC allows three onsite sale licenses for this census tract. There are currently three onsite sale licenses. The applicant submitted a PCN letter for the Commissioner's review and approval. Next slide. This is a picture of the coin laundry, which was what was previously at the location. Next slide. This is a photo of what is existing today. So, the restaurant will be, the exterior facade will be painted white. They have the bi-fold doors and windows and it'll be kept clean. Next slide. These are renderings of the interior of the bar and restaurant. These are the areas near the bar. Next slide. This is the lounge area near the bar. Next slide. And this is the stage that is at the rear corner of the bar. Next slide. And then this is an example of the interior rendering, showing you the location of the bar, the live entertainment stage at the far end of the restaurant, bar seating, and lounge seating. Next slide. As condition, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan by providing orderly redevelopment of the city and creating and maintaining a healthy economic condition. If the Planning Commission approves the request, the applicant will be required to complete site plan review, parcel map, and master sign program processes and it is exempt from further environmental review. Next slide. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions the Commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Open up a questions for you, Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we go back to the slide that it looked like there was a parking lot behind the building?
The, oh, the existing, that one.
Yeah, come back. That, that's a parking lot?
Yes. For the Intuit Dome.
Okay. And then I saw, I heard you speak to the fact, speaking of parking, it showed 40 spaces. That didn't seem like, is there any other potential parking? If somebody's going to be open until 2:00 AM, it seemed like they're going to have more than 40 cars.
Well, the applicant, the shopping center provides 40 parking spaces and the applicant is actually submitting the application with Assembly Bill 2097, which requires no additional parking for new developments.
Okay. Thank you for those facts. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Trejo?
What is Assembly Bill?
2097.
2097, you said?
Yes.
Just, I'm curious.
So, it basically, it prohibits the city from enforcing any minimum vehicle parking requirements for new development projects within half a mile of transit.
Okay, okay. All right, I was just curious. Thank you. Oh, let's see. I guess my other questions will be for the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions at this time, just for the applicant.
Okay, I have no questions for you, for the applicant. If the applicant is here, can you take the mic and tell us about your project? Give us your name, please.
How you doing? My name is Christopher Alapeg. I'm the GM of The Wood Urban Kitchen on Market Street. The owner, Jonathan Vog, is not here today because he's not feeling well. In regards to the project, you know, we're looking to have a venue that's a hybrid between a sports bar and a live music venue, specializing in live jazz and R&B, catering to a 35 and over demographic. We think it's something that'll be really good for the city, to provide great entertainment, a safe environment for everybody to enjoy. And, you know, we have a lot of experience in this field for the past 25, 30 years.
Okay, we're going to have some questions for you, sir. Did you not, did you say you the GM for?
Yeah, I'm the general manager of The Wood.
The one on Market?
Yeah, but I'll be the new GM of City of Champions.
Okay. Commissioner Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, obviously, thank you for your, sharing your experience.
Thanks.
That goes volumes, speaks volumes. I think I'm more concerned with, and maybe this is early in the planning, I guess the exterior. I'm looking for a little, is City of Champions going to be the name of?
That's what's proposed so far, yes.
Okay, proposed. Yeah, I guess, I don't know if I'm looking for, are there going to be lights, landscaping, something?
You know, I'm not really sure if we're going to just have like a nice neon sign or something, but just something that looks classy and professional. That's pretty much what we're going to be catering to as well.
Well, you said signage, so that could take a whole, I've seen all different types of signage. So, that could make a huge difference right there. And then, did you talk about, tell me a little about the security? Because you're saying 2:00 AM, right?
Yeah, so, we want it to be open from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Ideally, probably during the daytime when it's slow and there's no events going on. Probably have a security guard or two. And then if we do have like a busy event or if there is something going on at Intuit across the street or at SoFi, then we'll definitely maximize the security to make sure that, you know, the venue is safe and, you know, the mobile kitchen is safe and anybody loitering will be gone as well.
Cameras?
Yes, of course. Cameras inside and outdoor as well.
And I saw, I think I saw in the plan, were there two restroom?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think I saw that there. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes, the mobile kitchen, is that like a food truck where you'll be using?
No, it's not a food truck. Sorry to interrupt, but no, it's not a food truck. It's not going to be open to the public. It's just going to be used as, because the space is small, it's on like 3,000 square feet. So, with us having a mobile kitchen that's only, you know, accessible by our staff and our food runners, it'll pretty much be, you know, the food will be taken care of outside in the mobile kitchen and then brought inside to the customers, you know, just to provide that service as well.
But does, does it look like a food truck or, I don't think I?
No, I'm not necessarily sure what it's going to look like, but it'll be something nice that we have that's going to be next to, right next to our venue.
And how many people will be in the mobile kitchen?
Probably between two or four, depending on the demand. Definitely want to have enough kitchen staff to be able to handle, you know, whatever the customers want to order.
So, you'll have waitstaff that will take, that will provide menus to your customers?
Yes.
And they take the order, take it to the mobile kitchen and then take it up and return it and bring it to the customers.
Yes, we'll have a POS system. So, what will happen is the servers will take the order. It'll go to the mobile kitchen. It'll be prepared and the food runners will run it to the tables that it's assigned to.
Have you used mobile kitchens in other ventures?
I'm sorry?
Have you used mobile kitchens in other ventures?
No, we have not.
I'm just, I don't think I've heard of mobile kitchens before and that's why I'm asking.
Oh, I see.
Of how they, how they work in this type of situation. But you've been in the restaurant business for a while, so I guess you've seen a sample of it, example of the mobile kitchen and it'll work to provide?
Yeah, I do believe that it will work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Hi, what type of live entertainment are you looking at?
For us, you know, since we're catering to an older professional crowd, we want to really just have like live jazz, maybe some nice live R&B, piano player from time to time, saxophonist, just nice stuff.
Oh, okay.
Nice artist.
Now, you indicated you're going to be opening as early as, did you say 6:00 AM?
Yeah, the reason why we asked for the 6:00 AM is because of the international sports, whether it's soccer or the Olympics.
Formula One?
I'm sorry?
Formula One?
That too, you know.
Okay.
You know, it's all around the world and so the times for these events can be, you know, from 6:00 AM on. So, we just want to have the ability to be able to open during those times.
Now, I'm assuming you're going to have a website, correct?
Of course.
Okay, so, will you be listing what events will be playing at your?
I believe we will do that on the website, but you know, in 2024, like everybody uses the social media. So, for us, we'll probably do it on all of our social media to announce the different events going on, whether it's, you know, you know, auto racing or the Olympics or, you know, World Cup soccer.
I think it's great. I like the design. I think it's very nice. Where will you put the name of your restaurant? Have you decided?
You know, we, I'd probably have to talk to the architect, but I would assume it's probably going to be on the side where the prairie, where prairies at.
Okay.
Because that's just the biggest view right there.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, sir. I have a couple of questions for you. This building that you, first of all, you indicated that you're the general manager of The Wood on Market Street.
Yes.
So, that facility, does it have a kitchen there?
We do have a kitchen in the, in the building, yes.
Okay, so, was that kitchen there before or did you build that kitchen?
You know, it was there, but we added stuff to the kitchen because before it was like a little taco place. And so, for us to turn it into a barbecue restaurant, we kind of had to bring in different?
So, you added to the kitchen?
Yeah, different things.
Okay, very good. So, this particular facility that you're having now is 3,000 square feet. So, how large is The Wood? How large is that facility, you know?
I think The Wood is about 2,000 or so square feet.
So, it's smaller?
It is.
So, is it possible that, and based upon the design that we see here, is it possible that you can put a kitchen there rather than that mobile kitchen that you're speaking of? Is that a possibility?
You know, because it makes it, it makes it tight just because if you've ever been to The Wood, if you see how small it is on the inside and to have any type of lounge with live entertainment or at least a comfortable space for people to eat some food and have some drinks, it'll be, it'll be really, really tight to put a whole kitchen in there and with a full bar, it's just, it would be tough. It would be tough.
I'm like, one of my colleagues here, I'm not familiar with the mobile bar. I'm assuming, and this is only an assumption, you would have to correct me. It appears to me that it's like a food truck and I don't know if it moves or is it going to be stationary? Will it be something that will be permanently there? Or will it be able to go and come as it pleases? Are you stocking that, that food truck? Is it, is the food going to be dry food, of course? Is it going to be stored inside the building here? Or is it going to be inside the mobile truck or the mobile truck that I'm speaking of? So, kind of give us a little idea of how this is going to work, this mobile truck that you're talking about or mobile kitchen.
When I was talking to the owner about it, what he was telling me is that ideally, we might have some of the food that's made at The Wood as far as like the barbecue and everything and then have it, have it brought over to the food truck or not the food truck, to the mobile kitchen and then use it to make whatever we need to do in there.
So, that's just a proposal you're talking, that's nothing in stone of this? This is something, an idea that you came up with the owner, is that correct?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes, please fill me in on this because I'm?
Yeah, so, the idea is that the build-out for, for the kitchen within this facility was not originally incorporated within the lease terms for the ownership. And so, in order to be able to provide a food option for the guests of the establishment, the owner suggested creating a food, a mobile food kitchen, which is a food truck essentially, that would be available only for waited service for the, the guests of the establishment. So, as he mentioned, they would order their food at their table. The waited staff would then go and report to the kitchen as they would if the kid, if the truck was or the kitchen was inside the establishment. And then they would go and deliver it to the, to the, to the guest of the restaurant. And so, that's essentially how it's going to work. The food truck would be, would be parked in a space outside, just right outside the doors and would be available only for guests inside that are dining inside of the bar lounge area. So, it would, it essentially runs as though it's, it would be a kitchen that was fully functional and inside the restaurant. Unfortunately, the build-out for a commercial kitchen is extremely costly and also would could have been, you know, cost prohibitive for the project in, in the, in order to provide the ability to have food available for guests.
You know, you're asking us to give us, give you an approval on something and then we're pondering about what we think is suitable for not only the community, but that looks attractive as well. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bernard. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bernard. I'm, I'm just not familiar with this process of a food truck, but our idea is to actually approve distilled spirits. But in doing that, we want to make sure that when you are serving alcohol, then you have the proper foods that you need, or your, your body is filled with foods so you don't become too inundated. Um, so that's what, that's what we want to do. That's my comment, so. At this particular point, I'm gonna open it up for those individuals who are for this project or against this project. You can go to the mic and give us your name and tell us your reasoning for yes or no. You have one minute for each. If you're gonna talk about it, please, just form a line over there so I don't have to keep saying next, please. You have one minute? No one? Okay, we're gonna close this segment. I'm having, I need to open up final questions for my commissioners, starting with Commissioner Fowler.
No further questions.
Commissioner Trejo?
Just a comment. Uh, I know, and going back to the, uh, mobile food kitchen, it's something new. I mean, I haven't seen it before, but what I like is that food will be available, because what we're looking at is the sale of distilled spirits. And I always like to see food available when, uh, when, uh, customers have the ability to, to, um, drink distilled spirits, enjoy themselves. And if some of the food is coming from the Wood, I think that, that, uh, that is going to fill them up. But again, even though it's a, a sort of a new concept for me, the, the most important for me is that, that they are considering, or they took into consideration having food for their customers. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Yes, I'm familiar with the mobile kitchen. I've been to, uh, restaurants or bars that have had mobile kitchens set up. I don't have a problem with that. Um, I don't have any further comments or questions.
Okay, I have no questions. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion. But I do have a question for staff.
Okay.
It indicates, number one, make a determination on whether this request serves as a public convenience or necessity. Do I need to add a comment about that, or no?
We, we've included the, uh, finding in the resolution, and so, um, yeah.
Okay. I move that we affirm the categorical exemption EA CE two zero two four one zero two and adopt the resolution approving SUP twenty four zero 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 one six. And I also recommend that we do add a condition for a one-year review of this.
Second, second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. We call for any questions. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Is there a appeal process?
Yes, sir. According to the IMC, anyone may appeal the decision of the planning commission by filing a written appeal within twenty days of the notice of the decision and an appeal fee of nine hundred and forty-two dollars.
Okay, very good, sir. We'll see what happens. All right, I think we have one more, right?
Two more. We're almost there.
Almost there.
Item six D, a public, a public hearing to consider an application by Lavender Blue Group for a special use permit number twenty-four dash zero 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 one eight to allow the onsite sale of distilled spirits, live entertainment, and outdoor dining in an existing one-story, five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square foot commercial building on an approximately seven thousand sixty square foot C two zone property at five two nine East Manchester Boulevard.
Chairman Fowler is present, and notice and time has been given in a form, notice in the time and form has been, has, has been given in a manner required by law, excuse me. Um, staff has received no written communication on this matter, and Planner Christine Rivera Rivera is available to do another short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site for this special use permit is located at five twenty-nine East Manchester Boulevard and is zoned general commercial. Next slide. The property is located on the northwest corner of Manchester Boulevard and Manchester Drive, with commercial uses to the south and west and residential uses to the north and east. The applicant is proposing a restaurant with the sale of distilled spirits for onsite consumption, outdoor dining, and live entertainment. Next slide. The subject site is an existing one-story retail building. It is currently vacant. Next slide. Fourteen off-site parking spaces will be provided at five twenty-seven East Manchester Boulevard, which is outlined in blue. And twenty parking spaces will be provided at six oh one East Manchester Boulevard, which is outlined in yellow. The restaurant is required to provide twenty-five parking spaces. With both of these off-site locations, the restaurant will provide thirty-four parking spaces. Next slide. The restaurant occupies approximately six thousand square feet, with the outdoor dining occupying approximately eight hundred forty square feet. The proposed hours of operation are one PM to eleven PM, Wednesday through Sunday. They will serve a full menu of appetizers, salads, sandwiches, burgers, pasta, meat entrees, vegetarian options, and drink options of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The applicant will provide security guards and security cameras. Cameras will be included in plans to the satisfaction of the planning division during site plan review. Next slide. The ABC allows five onsite sale licenses for this census tract. There are currently two on sale, onsite sale licenses. No P S, no PCN is required. The applicant currently holds an active type forty-seven license that allows the onsite sale of distilled spirits. They will transfer that license to this location at five twenty-nine East Manchester Boulevard. Next slide. This is the existing exterior of the building. Next slide. Uh, this is a rendering of the proposed building. So the exterior facade will be repainted, new signage will be placed, and a trellis and plants will be added to the new outdoor dining area. Live entertainment will take place on a maximum seventy-five square foot movable stage. Outdoor dining will occupy approximately eight hundred forty square feet at the rear of the building. Entrance to this area for outdoor dining will only be from inside the restaurant. Next slide. These are, these renderings are examples of the look that the restaurant will be going for. Next slide. As condition, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and compatible with the downtown TOD goals of being a place to eat and be entertained downtown, being a gathering place for the community, and being an economic engine downtown. If the planning commission approves the request, the applicant will be required to complete the site plan review and sign permit process, and it is exempt from further environmental review. Next slide. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions the commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you. Open it up for questions for you, Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you. No questions for the staff, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Trejo?
Um, I read the report that said that there was fourteen parking covenant for use of fourteen parking, fourteen parking spaces at five twenty-seven East Manchester and eleven spaces at six oh one East Manchester is what the report said. You said, but I heard you say twenty.
Let's see.
I am looking on, are you on page two of the report? Under parking and circulation on that second paragraph. Let's see. It says.
I'm not sure where I got the eleven that I wrote down, so, but it is twenty parking spaces.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, Shaw Williams?
Uh, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant. Okay, thank you, Christine. If the applicant is here?
Hey, good evening. It's Marsha Tekesty from the Lavender Blue. So I just want to say a little bit of background on me, um, so you'll know a little bit about where I'm coming from. So I actually started in this industry with my first small sports bar, about eight or nine hundred square feet, one sixteen North Market Street in nineteen eighty-five. Since then, I have gone on to own and operate four additional sports bars slash clubs slash restaurant. Um, as far as, um, Palm Springs, a live blues club I had there, downtown Palm Springs on, uh, Palm Canyon Drive. I also owned, uh, for nine years, seven thousand square foot sports bar in Los Angeles on, um, Western and Eighty-Eighth, Eighty-Eighth and Western. I was there operating. We had a good time and a lot of fun activities. And, uh, from there, I, uh, was fortunate enough to lease, take possession of and lease the current location that I'm at right, right now, which is thirty-three ten West Manchester, Lavender Blue. During the time that I have been in business, um, operating these different venues, one thing that has always been a part of my operation, because even though I'm not a musician, I love live entertainment. So I have had blues, jazz artists from local to naturally known performers doing shows at my different locations. So live entertainment's not new to me. Operating, uh, restaurants and clubs with liquor licenses is not new to me as well. So I've been at Lavender Blue for eleven and a half years. I celebrated eleven years of operation there in January of this year. And I have been, I've been a part of this community forever, and I am always, have always been looking to like expand on what I do there. And so this location that I found at five twenty-nine East Manchester is going to give me the opportunity to expand what I'm currently doing in the community and have great, continue to have great live entertainment, especially blues, jazz, some R and B, expanded menu that will, um, be in line with the environment, the atmosphere that will be, uh, presented at Harmony by Lavender Blue. So I am going to, at this point, turn this mic over to my son, Zagai Tekesty. And any questions that you have about the project, the property, any of that, he will definitely be able to answer your questions.
Thank you, guys. Uh, whatever questions you have, go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna start our questions. Commissioner Fowler, please.
Thank you. Um, I guess my first question will clearly thank you for your presentation. Obviously, you are one of the legacy businesses in the city. Was, I wasn't clear, are you planning to move the current business and to this location, or are you planning to do both?
Yeah, this will be a relocation from the current business.
Okay. And then my other question really had to do with time. If this project's approved, what's your timeline?
As quick as y'all let us do it.
You have an estimate?
I, I, I mean, if we could be open by the beginning of the year, that would be great. But it's a matter of how quickly we can get through the planning and permitting approvals. The quicker we can get it, the, the better. Like she said, we're experienced. There's no structural work being done. So it's, uh, pretty much cleaning up, adding a kitchen to the property, fresh paint, and then, um, putting in FFNE.
Well, it looks beautiful inside. So the, uh, up, up on the exterior, I heard you, I think she mentioned, I see you said a trellis, so you, you have a design in mind, I take it.
For which part?
Signage and landscaping?
Yeah, signage. We're finalizing the name. We wanted to use Harmony by Lavender Blue, having some possible trademark issues there that we're working through. But yeah, we, we, the current property has, um, old signage that is outdated. So we want to update that. Um, and so once, uh, we get the name, we'll go through the processing for the signage. It'll be all LED signage, um, that, that will be on the property.
And so, security, cameras?
Security, cameras, whole work. Our, uh, main security guy is right here. Oh, yeah, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
The big burly guy.
You brought everyone, huh? Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Trejo?
Thank you, and thank you for being a part of Inglewood for so long.
Thank you.
And that you're expanding and improving, or enhancing, I should say.
Next level, next level.
Next level, that's right. I think that's the new term is next level. Same thing here. I think we have the, uh, crime statistics that are very high, that have increased, actually. But I'm holding fast to, to the rule. I don't know if it's somebody else's rule, but it's certainly the rule that I've been going by, that the more pedestrian activity that there is, uh, the, uh, it's, it's a situation that lessens the crime. And that's what I like, I like seeing here, is that there will be a viable business that, based on your background and your experience, that you will take care of it and you will do everything possible to, to reduce the crime in, in the area, because you're gonna protect your business. So it's, uh, it's something good for the area, and I applaud you for, for going next level. Thank you.
Thank you. Along that lines, I'd just like to say our track record, like she said, we've been in the business since nineteen eighty-five, forty years almost, no issues. Inglewood Police Department is, you know, we are on very good terms with them, never had any issues with any of our properties. So we have a crowd that doesn't encourage crime, as well as we put in place the proper protocols and measures to make sure everyone has a great time.
So you were just a little guy when, uh, when your mom, when your mom was starting all this?
Great, let's say it like that.
He couldn't sit at the bar. We had to keep him hidden in the corner.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Marsha is a staple in this community. She's a class act. Food is always excellent, an asset to our community. I've, uh, had several occasions at your location, Lavender Blue. She has hosted, uh, Morning Sun Monarch Luminai Association dances, and we just love her. So, um, the only question I have, the parking lot, will that be repaved?
Oh, yeah, the, it's gonna be totally, everything's gonna be totally upgraded on the park. There's dips and everything. We gotta level it.
Yeah.
Repave it, mark it.
And I'm assuming the name is gonna go on top of that tower? And I'm assuming the name is gonna go on top of that tower that's?
Uh, again, what you guys allow us to do, yes, we would like to. We, we are trying to, this property, as you know, is a main corridor for traffic, foot traffic, street traffic, going from downtown to a Hollywood Park area. So, we have some ideas that we really want to do with this property, beautify it, make it a upscale staple pillar in the environment. The, the food menu, uh, upscale, uh, it's not just gonna be regular. Like, this is gonna, steaks, crab cakes, fish, you know, high-end, upscale menu. So, there's a lot of things that we want to do, we're hoping that the city will work with us to allow us to do all that, and hoping that they will allow us to do it in a very expedited fashion.
Will she have her staple there, her peach cobbler?
These guys won't let us not have that.
Okay, I think that's it, I have no further questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of questions. In regards to the parking, because at one point, Marcia had come out to, actually interested in this particular building, and it was an issue about parking. So, you made contact with, I'm assuming, both of your neighbors, one at five twenty-seven East Manchester. Can you bring that up for me? Because I would, I want to see. Yes, the one in the blue is, that's the five twenty-seven?
Correct, and that, we actually already have a lease for it.
You have an agreement with that particular?
Yes.
Is that vacant land right there, or is that a building there?
Which, where are you talking?
Five twenty-seven?
Yeah, this is all vacant, everything, this part you see in blue is all vacant, yes.
So, that five twenty-seven is vacant land?
Correct, it's a parking lot as of now.
So, that's gonna be paved as well?
Repaved, remarked, yes.
And then, the one next to it, there's a street there, correct?
Uh, you're talking right here?
On the yellow.
Yes, this is, uh.
There's a street there?
Yeah, Manchester Terrace, I believe, or Manchester Drive.
And that's vacant land as well?
This is, yeah, this is where the Regency Outdoor signage, the billboard sits. So, they're right here in this corner. So, this used to have that, it was like a three or four white buildings that they tore down.
So, there's like a dip or something?
Yeah, there's this ramp right here.
So, is that gonna be leveled, or is that gonna be?
That's all part of the negotiations, what we're talking with, with the owner. We're in discussions on that property, active negotiations on leasing that property and all that's part of our discussions with them.
So, an agreement, so a lease agreement is gonna be made for that, is that correct, Mr. McCombo?
Yes, sir, and what will happen is that, um, the striping and required landscaping that's associated with the parking, um, lots would go through, site plan review is parking lot improvements, and so, we have standards that would ensure, um, compliance with, um, our parking standards and screening and landscaping, so on and so forth. As well as signage, um, just want to also note that the roof sign requires another special use permit, but because nothing was proposed, we weren't addressing that at this time, and we will have to come back potentially at a later date, once their signage plan is finalized and we can determine the best, the best route of approval for them.
Now, finally, on your, on your site, if you can bring up the photo of the rendering, the final rendering? Yes, that, that's a, that's a parking lot as well.
That's the five-two-seven, that's the five-two-seven lot you see next to the building.
It's adjacent to it, right next door.
Oh, I see. So, you, you indicated in your proposal here that you guys are gonna have outdoor dining. And, and so, that, the only way you can get there is through the inside of the building, correct?
Top, yeah, if you go, well, yeah, so, you actually go to the, uh, the one, the very first site map that you showed? Right here, yeah, so, right here, there's, um, a cutout here where we'll do the outdoor patio area. We had originally proposed to have access from the parking lot as well, but I, there's, because it's a separate parcel, we have to go through the easement process to get all that done. So, as of now, the access would be from inside the building.
Okay. I just want to make a comment on Lavender Blue. I have been there a few times, several times actually. I noticed that the Lavender Blue is, um, set up for people that are a little more mature. I don't want to say older people, I just want to say mature people. Somebody said old folks, somebody said that? Oh, grown folks, yes. You did, you did an affair for our, one of our city council members, who is no longer a city councilman, George Dotson, you did something for him. I was there at, and this is the one on Manchester. I, I enjoyed going there. You had some wonderful New Year's Eve parties, which were, when you say a New Year's Eve party, you, you want to think that no one got out of line, it's just a New Year's Eve party and everybody having a good time. And you had one of my neighbors, who actually was, um, one of your artists there, Toni Malone. She was one of the artists at Lavender Blue, and she sung, she did a fantastic job. So, I, I want to commend you on Lavender Blue. I'm trusting that Lavender Blue, the other Lavender Blue, if you're gonna name it that, will be just as successful as the one that you have on Manchester, on the east side of Prairie. Saying that, I have no other questions. I want to open it up for those individuals who are for or against this particular project. Please go to the mic and give us your name. You have one minute to make your presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone, my name is Brett C. S. Roberts, one of our transportation commissioners here in the city of Inglewood, and also represent the city on the communal college board. But I'm not here in that capacity, I'm here as an Inglewood resident, and I'm here as somebody who is a passionate and vociferous supporter of everything that Marcia Tekesty does. This woman is salt of the earth, she's integrous, but more than that, she knows how to operate a business as well. So does the Tekesty, so does the Tekesty family. I've had the opportunity to patronize their businesses, both on Western and on Manchester, and it's just a great place. It's a place for a community, um, it is a place, it's a, it's a great watering hole. So, that said, I'm excited for this new venture. I'm here late night because I wanted to show my support, and I hope that, um, it's approved. Thank you so much, Brett C. S. Roberts.
Good evening, I'm Commissioner Jacques LeShure, the chairman of the Arts Commission for the city of Inglewood, and I've been knowing this, I'll say, family for many, many years. And what you're going to get on Manchester, further down, further western Manchester, is the ultimate in class and, and action, you're gonna see it. If you haven't been to Lavender Blue on a Sunday, you really haven't been to Lavender Blue, you've been on another day, but you have to go on a Sunday to experience the finest music you'll ever hear in this city. And, and I know people would say, well, can you prove that? Yes, we can, so, you need to make sure you check that out, and it's gonna be even greater down the street on, on five, what is that, five twenty-nine Manchester? So, make sure that you all approve this one, this is a no-brainer, it's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful thing, it's gonna add to the area, and the crime rate will go down, and security will be good. I can vouch for the security staff right now, he's here, all right, part of it. So, and a lot of the supporters here, so please consider the approval.
Hello, everyone, my name is Loray Fowler, and I'm the chef at Lavender Blue. I've been with Marcia for over ten years, and everything that they do is about the community. Marcia draws everything from God first, and I think Lavender Blue follows that scene. So, I can say, the food is good and the music is good. I think this would be good for our community of Inglewood. Thank you very much.
Good evening, uh, my name is Benjamin Segura. I am a licensed clinical social worker for the state of California, and I proudly serve my community here in Inglewood. I've been a resident for more than forty years, long enough to remember the Sears Tower, now at Vons. My concern is that I didn't hear the hours of operation. I live on Manchester Drive. My first concern is the plan for mitigation on noise pollution, given that it looks like an outdoor venue in the back. Secondly, I counted about forty tables at the venue, which is fine, with about twenty parking spaces. Next concern is, where are the remainder of the parking tenants and patrons gonna park at? I'm assuming on Manchester Drive, which adds to the current problem that we currently have, is everyone at the Forum and at Solifi taking all of the residents' parking and not having anywhere to park. Thirdly is, um, speed. I would suggest there be a, a comment for speed bumps as there are, there will be beverages and alcohol served. My concern is my kids and my family, as well as the residents on that street, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Walker Senior. I was in the restaurant business a few years ago, I had two restaurants. So, I was looking up. And I'm still here personally. Lavender, Lavender Blue has a professional staff that treats us all like grown folks. You don't have no problems in that bar, and you have a good time. The food is good, and the people are good, and the music is excellent. One thing I like about the music is, not only do we have a good man, Van Leeover there, he allows them up and sing. Every week, we get new singers in there, and they participate, and that's great for the community. And last and most important, Marcia's been God's sin as far as my veteran organization is concerned. I'm vice commander of the National Association of Black Veterans, and every time we want to do an event, we just call Marcia, she makes it available. It's always successful. And again, thank you.
Good evening to the commission and to all in attendance, uh, my name is Jamel Melville. I am a family friend and have been lucky enough to be a patron of Lavender Blue. I wasn't around for the other restaurants, the successful ventures that the family was involved in. But I would say that Lavender Blue is one of the best places that I've been to in LA. Never any riffraff, um, they treat you with respect. As a previous speaker had mentioned, um, the food is good, and there's a lot of respect and love that you see there amongst the patrons and towards the, the family. Like, when you see Ms. Marcia walk around, like, they always greet her, treat her like a celebrity, almost in a previous sense of the word, they, they celebrate her, and they celebrate the business. It's wonderful, I've recommended this place to friends, I've been there quite often. Yeah, it's an awesome place, and I hope that you guys approve this, thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Belma Stevens. I am a resident of Los Angeles now, but I was a resident of Inglewood for almost twenty years. I love this city, and I love Marcia. I love Lavender Blue. It brings an adult situation to, uh, for adults to go to. That is what I appreciate. I was a former member of your committee, I used to be on the Planning and Land Use Committee for Inglewood. So, I know what your job is until, and I tell you, this lady and her restaurant qualifies for that. Everything that needed in Inglewood, she qualifies for. The food is good, the environment is good, the security is good. I'm an ex-parole agent, so I, I'm very much concerned about crime and, and the environment. So, I think that this should, this project should definitely be approved. Thank you, Marcia.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, so my name is Jennifer Fowler, and I have been working with Lavender Blue for about, I would say, three or four years now, but it feels like a lifetime. And when I tell you that Marcia gives and gives and gives and gives of herself for the community, she truly does. Uh, I know firsthand, every year, she does Mother's Day events for the mothers. At one point around the holidays, she hands out food for the homeless and also the veterans, and I just so enjoy working for Marcia. I, um, help her on the side and actually am there sometimes, um, when she needs me, but I just want to say, Marcia, you are doing an amazing job, and I am so excited about this new season, and God is just gonna take you to another higher level, and I'm here for it. So, yes, approve her, uh, because Jennifer Fowler said so, okay?
Good evening, my name is Angelique Johnson, and I am a future candidate for City Council for District Four, but main thing is this woman here, Marcia. I've been rocking with Marcia since nineteen eighty-four, since the Players Choice Club. I used to be on a team at the Five Torches, that is a old restaurant in Inglewood, and all the bars would play softball against each other, and we would always meet up at Marcia. Marcia used to have a women's event where we would come in, and it was the most phenomenal event that I've been to, and we made a vision board. I still have that vision board, and I've still been checking off checkpoints off of that vision board, and that was two thousand seven. So, Marcia imparts a lot to the community and to us individuals, and she deserves this break. Marcia, we love you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Billy Campbell. I've been patronizing Lavender Blue since they opened. And I'm there whenever they open. Little, want to ask a question superficial. Are you buying this building?
Your questions have to be directed at us, Mr. Campbell.
I can ask that, because that person, my first building when I was twenty-three years old. And I asked Marcia years ago, were you buying this, that building here? But, uh, this Marcia and her family, they runs a building business as if so, it's like it should be renting. Every going and getting a personal attention the way that they should be given. And so, I would want you all to definitely approve her. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Roland Talton, and I'm a longtime resident of, uh, Inglewood. Been here since, I think about nineteen sixty-four. And I was also the president of the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce for almost twelve years. So, uh, I've been here, I've known Marcia, got to know her about, how long you say you've been there, Marcia? Eleven years? I met her, uh, almost when she first opened, and she enticed me back to her place, and I've been there ever since. And to your concern, sir, about the people and, and the, the driving by and all that, the people that, that frequent Lavender Blue now are not the type that would cause you any concern. I can, I can guarantee you that. So, and I know most, anybody that, that goes there could tell you that. You know, it's a place to go for, what'd you say, grown folks, and people who know how to act. And I hope you will, you know, give her her due, thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Derek Callaway, I'm currently a resident of Inglewood city, and I want to thank everyone for what they do for the community. I want to thank Marcia especially for allowing me to be security when we need it. And it's very important that we have it. So, it's a pleasure of working with her and dealing with her with the different places that she deal with. And I've been doing this for over thirty-five years, and it's a pleasure. And I just want to thank you, and you deserve it.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna close this segment. And then I'm gonna have my commissioners give their last questioning. So Commissioner Fowler, you have any final questions or comments?
I did have one question for the staff. I was, you know, now you should have never told me about AB 2097, because would that be applicable to this project? How do we decide when that works?
So the applicant-
Parking, just for you, for your notification.
Yeah, so AB 2097 is applicable to any commercial use or residential use that comes through the city. The applicant made a request at the onset of their application in order to do so. If that then becomes a something that the applicant would choose to use in this environment, they would be able to, per the state statute. However, parking is a need. And so, you know, if that's if they want to continue to move on as proposed, they would also be able to do that as well.
I just thought the applicant should know that. Marcia, thank you so much for continuing to push us on the appropriate need for restaurants that have the class as yours. We appreciate that. You have no idea how so. It is for grown folks, but I've been there to several events for sororities, fraternities. Not necessarily they're grown, but they're not your age, Mr. Chair. But there are younger people that do attend Lavender Blue. So this would be harmony by Lavender Blue. So I look forward to it, and thank you so much.
Commissioner Trejo?
I don't have any additional comments. Thank you. Other than whoever makes the motion, I'd like to have them include, or even I may make the motion, the one-year review.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw Williams?
I have no further questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions either. I don't know what she meant by people my age, so. I'm gonna take it as a compliment, though.
Our age.
Because, you know, you get to this particular point, you're just glad to be here. So I am glad to be here. So is there a motion on the floor, please?
Motion. I moved that the Planning Commission affirmed the categorical exemption EACE 2024-106 and adopt the resolution approving SUP 2400018 with a condition added of a one-year review.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. We're calling for any questions on the motion. Hearing none, we're gonna call for the vote.
Commissioner Fowler? Aye. Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
Mr. McCumbo? Appeal process?
McCumbo.
You know I know it, I'm looking at it.
I just thought it was a nickname, so I just was rolling with it.
How about Bernard? How's that? I won't mess that up, okay?
According to the IMC, anyone may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission on this matter. The appeal must be filed within twenty days of the notice of decision and shall be made by filing a written notice along with a $942 appeal fee.
Okay. I want to make a comment to the gentleman who lives on Manchester Terrace, Manchester Drive. You had indicated something about speed bumps. Is that's what you had said? Is that correct? So that's a process that you would have to go through. So you might want to get with the planning planning for traffic to get with that and make your decision on if this that's a procedure that you want to go through. Also, you have permits in your area. So if everybody has registered for your permits, that's something that you can follow up with too as well. But again, like the gentleman indicated, you really don't we don't have that kind of problem with people going to Lavender Blue. They're more courteous. If you come out and say, hey, you're in front of my driveway, they're gonna move their car. They're not gonna be in front of your driveway. You don't see a lot of people going to Lavender Blue, doing willies in the middle of the street, that kind of thing. So it's a different crowd that goes to Lavender Blue. It's a more mature crowd, I would say. I understand. I understand. Well, what's happening in Inglewood right now? Someone mentioned that things are changing in Inglewood. What has changed in Inglewood? And we have to say everything, and we have to be able to get ready. We have to be ready for the changes that are happening here at this particular point, even as residents, because I live here as well. I live in District One, not far from Lavender Blue. So we just have to be ready for the changes that are here. We just have to, as as businesses, we just have to make sure that we work with our residents as well, so they're aware of what we're doing and how we want to do it. If there's a party going on, invite the residents. So they'll be part of it as well. So those are my comments. Congratulations on your Lavender Blue, and we look forward to seeing you. Okay. We have one more on the agenda. Please stay, don't leave. We have one more.
We enjoy your company. It is great to see this next level that we're in, that people are interested in and are coming out. That's really neat.
Where's that gentleman who said he was part of the the guy right there? He said he was, this guy right here, he's getting up right there. He was the
Oh, let's go, let's go, I'm asleep. Oh, my God.
Is that you?
Who is this? Michael Gradington. Who is it you are?
No more, no more. Okay, Madam Secretary?
Item 7A, a non-public hearing to consider an application by Michael Gradington to approve exterior modifications to an existing approximately 7,100-square-foot two-story, multiple-tenant, commercial building on an approximately 5,250-square-foot HC historic core zone property at 300 South Market Street.
Chairman, the file is present, and notice is not required for a design review. And Assistant Planner Sean May is available to do a short staff presentation.
Before you do the presentation, Sean, can we get our commissioner back in?
No, he's recused from this item as well.
Oh, is he?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Shoot, we need to get with him.
Okay.
He need to take out all the lunch, huh?
I think it should be dinner.
For real? I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site for this design review is located at 300 South Market Street. Next slide. This subject site has a downtown TOD general plan designation. Next slide. The subject site is located on the southeast corner of Market Street and Nutwood Street and consists of seven retail spaces. Staff has approved interior tenant improvements on May 28, 2024, to create King's Row, a shoe and clothing store with four additional retail tenant spaces. The approved changes maintain the existing residential use located on the second floor. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are commercial properties. Next slide. The existing facade, as shown behind me, consists of different colored storefronts, a dilapidated storefront cornice, and architectural features, and a blue and tan second-floor facade. Next slide. The applicant proposes exterior alterations that maintain the building's unique architectural design while updating facade to meet the standards of the city's TOD guidelines. The exterior alterations include new transparent aluminum glass storefronts along Market Street and Nutwood Street that help create a more attractive pedestrian facade. A restoration and repair of the existing architectural features that give the building its existing charm. These include the rooftop parapet, the storefront cornices, and the painted window motifs, as well as an extension of the architectural column located on the corner, right where the sign is located. The new facade contains two storefront entrances along Market Street and three along Nutwood Street. Next slide. This shows the three entrances that will be located along Nutwood Street. Next slide. The applicant proposes uplighting to highlight the architectural columns and enhance the night facade of the building. Next slide. The building is further enhanced by signage that includes the individually backlit letters for the primary tenant, King's Row. Next slide. Findings have been made that the project is in accordance with the design review standards. And as condition, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will be compatible with the surrounding area uses. Next slide. The proposed project is consistent with the downtown TOD general plan designation, as well as the strategies and goals of the city's active transportation plan and energy and climate action plan. This project is exempt from further environmental review. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions the commission might have. The applicant and property owner are also present to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Good presentation. Questions for you? We're gonna open up with Commissioner Fowler.
No questions for staff, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Trejo?
Thanks for the presentation, Sean. So the improvement is for, what, three building sites?
It's one building, creating new storefronts. Can we go to the daytime renderings? As you can see here, the new proposed facade has transparent glass windows along both the Nutwood and the Market facade that will really open up the building compared to the existing site. It also proposes a repair and restoration of existing architectural features that you can see on the second floor that really help improve the building facade compared to the existing site conditions.
Yeah, that existing existing condition is pretty poor. And it is really quite an improvement, quite an improvement. And it still retains that, I guess it's Art Deco design, which I think looks fabulous there. So it'll be where I see, like shoes. I'm looking at the rendering I have in my packet. That's like one store, King's Row. And then the others are available for lease. Is that it?
Yes, there are two spaces that are currently vacant that are looking for tenants. And there are some pop-up spaces that are available to King's Row as well.
Yeah, that's quite an improvement. Good job on that design. Very nice. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
I don't have any questions. More of a comment about the design. It's awesome. It reminds me of the buildings that I see when I go to Beverly and Beverly Hills or Century City. That vibe is really nice, really nice design. Thank you.
I have no questions. If the applicant is here, please come. Give us your name and tell us about your project.
How's it going? My name is Deontay Johnson. I'm the owner of Soul Classics, King's Row. I've been in retail since 2010, when I purchased Soul Classics in Columbus, Ohio. This project has been in the works since about 2017. That's when we first did our pop-up here in Los Angeles, actually near Melrose and Fairfax in that area. In 2021, we received official approval from Nike and Jordan Brand to expand to the Los Angeles County area. And we did a lot of market travel, a lot of market research. And Inglewood was the place that felt like home. It felt community-oriented. I think one of my first stops was to Sippin' Sonder. It was recommended to me. Sitting in there, it felt like the people that we wanted in our establishment and that we typically serve. We're primarily a shoe and apparel retail boutique. Like I said, it's been around since about 2006. And our primary focus is community. So, you know, when we looked at areas, we could went anywhere from Huntington Beach all the way up to Pasadena, where we really felt like this was a place that we could know the people that were coming in and out of our store versus, you know, a ton of outside travelers who may only frequent one time. So also with the space, like we were here, like I said, we're very involved in community back home where we're from. We've already done a back-to-school event. We teamed up with the City of Inglewood for the back-to-school event that just happened. We do a ton of things with report cards for students. And we felt like the area was perfect for what we needed. And then also, we're excited about the what's to come. So we're we're excited about being here, so excited that we purchased the building. So if you believe in investment, you'll at least have me on the hook for thirty years as we pay this mortgage down. But we're excited about being in the city of Inglewood. We're gonna be here for the long run, and we're just ready for what's to come.
Okay, very good. We have questions for you. So we're gonna start our question with Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, welcome, Deontay. I just left Ohio a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. Thank you for doing your market research. Thank you for investing in Inglewood. When you said you owned, I wondered about that and the fact that there's space. And thank you for the back-to-school event. That'll just be the beginning. Trust me. What I really am pleased about is the decor, the architecture, and what you propose to do. That is like night and day. And as Commissioner Shaw Williams said, when you go to Beverly Hills, these are the kind of storefronts that you see, that level of quality. So I commend you and your architect, architect rather, on what that's going to bring to that corner. That's gonna brighten that up a lot. Very impressive. I don't think I have any you shared your business acumen. I trust that. Who is Michael Gradington?
Oh, he's right here.
Oh, there you are.
Then this is my project manager, Brian Chia.
Wonderful. Great teamwork. Look forward to the business.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes, like I said in my previous comments, boy and I'd like the architect to stand up because because, young man, you did a fabulous job on the design for the building. The building owner, what a great team. It really is going to enhance that that corner, as Commissioner Fowler said. And it is just marvelous. That's all I can say. It's I've been around enough to remember some of the how nice Market Street looked way back. I've been here just about fifty years. And this just wow, that's all I can say. Wow, thank you for choosing Inglewood. Thank you for investing in Inglewood and investing your future in Inglewood's future. It is, it's wonderful to see. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Again, just a comment. I was at the IUSD event, the backpack. And I mean, those kids were overjoyed with getting sneakers. You know, some of those kids may not even had had sneakers or brand-new ones given to them before. So that's, that was really commendable of you. And you're definitely going to be a blessing coming to downtown Inglewood. Thank you. No further comment. Thank you, no further comment.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments, questions actually. King Row, is that the name of it?
Yes, um, so Soul Classics will function as a, the, the shoe portion of it, um, just because it, you know, it helps with our, our brand recognition that we already have established, but the name of the building is King's Row.
And what do you sell there? What is it?
Uh, primarily footwear, um, footwear and apparel. So we sell Nike, Jordan, Adidas vans, uh, New Balance, Birkenstocks, a little bit of everything when it comes to footwear, then, then all of the top, um, um, culturally, culturally relevant apparel brands that, that accompany those shoe brands.
Oh, very good. First of all, thank you for investing in the city of Inglewood. Do you have seniors discounts? No, just kidding.
Oh, now you gotta be a senior.
You didn't answer the question.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, y'all started laughing, I didn't know if we were, we could, we could make it happen. We have an Inglewood discount right now on our website, so.
Oh, that's wonderful.
We make it happen, so.
That is wonderful.
Very good. Well, thank you for investing in the city of Inglewood. I'm sure that it will pan out for you. You know, not long ago, at our last Commissioners meeting, planning meeting, or the one previous, we did a design review on a building that's north of Manchester. So what happens a lot of times is that if you have a set of dominos sitting up, it's like a domino effect. Everybody falls in line of what's happening. So eventually, it's gonna pick up, it's gonna pick up, it's gonna pick up. So thank you for investing in the city of Inglewood, we appreciate that. I have no other questions. Uh, Commissioners don't have any other questions, 'cause it's almost 10 o'clock. So, and I'm sure you've been waiting there patiently for us to come give you an answer. So I'm opening it up for motion?
Motion. I move to affirm the categorical exemption EACE 2024 091 and adopt the resolution approving DR 24 00030.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, we call for any question on the motion. Hearing none, we'll call for our vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Appeal process?
Yes, Chairman, uh, the applicant may appeal the decision, um, of the planning commission on this matter. The appeal must be filed within 10 days of the notice of decision and, um, shall be accompanied with a written notice and an appeal fee of $389.
So you got your plan review, congratulations.
I di, I didn't get the role of the young man sitting down with the beard. You're the manager?
Project manager.
Project manager, okay, well, congratulations to you also for being part of a wonderful team.
Yes, we'll be there soon. When you open, we're coming in. I'm a New Balance guy, so I like New Balance. I wanna, I wanna get...
Oh my goodness, your swag.
I wanna get my swag on, there you go.
Gotta get some Coco Dolls.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you. Okay, at this particular point, I wanna open it up for anyone that want to address the planning commission on any items that, any items rather, any items that were not on the agenda, you can do so at this particular time. Just go to the mic, give us your name, and... Tell us what you're gonna talk about. Hearing, seeing none, we're gonna close that segment. And now I'm gonna open it up for, um, Commissioners Initiatives. So I'm gonna start on the other end, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Just have a good weekend, hydrate, hydrate, hydrate. That's it.
Commissioner Trejo?
You know, um, this agenda tonight really is showcasing next level for Inglewood. All of these, you know, even, even in crime-ridden areas, you've got people that are going to invest in Inglewood with new, with new projects, restaurants, services to the local residents, of course, and, and to visitors, and it's wonderful to see. And you see the new designs coming in, and like, like the chairman said, you know, it's a domino effect. You know, more and more people, I think, are gonna be coming in. And Inglewood is, it's a great city, and it's a beautiful city. Residential areas, you have big houses, you have small houses, uh, lawns are tended, landscaping is, is in. Uh, a lot of our commercial areas are very nice, too. And, uh, more and more, they're, uh, they're getting better. I have, uh, and, and right now with next level and general plan process that we're talking about, we have all of these great things. Uh, a lot of visitors won't be able to see our residential areas, our parks that are also very nice. What they see are some of our, uh, major arterial streets, I guess I call them, uh, that are not so nice. You get, uh, La Brea, uh, a lot of the parts of La Brea that have medians that look dirty. They're just dirt, no landscaping. You get a lot of, like, uh, along La Cienega, you could, you, you can tell that it needs new asphalt. The curbing, the painting on the curbs are faded, and they just look neglected. And that's, those are the parts that a lot of the visitors see on the major arterial. So they don't get to see the really nice, uh, portions, sections of, of Inglewood, which is, which is really nice. I would like to see as a part of this general plan process that we prioritize improving our major, our major arterial corridors with the medians, start with the medians, a plan for landscaping the medians, to have, have a landscaping plan that will allow planting now instead of six months before the Olympics come in, so it can, they can look, um, like they've been there for a while, that we take pride in it. Visitors won't see the nice residential areas. They won't, maybe they'll see some of the commercial, particularly the new ones that are coming in that look very nice, or some of our more established ones. But I, I really have an issue with the initial, um, impact that visitors see in Inglewood as they're driving to go see a game, to go into the entertainment venues, sports venues, and I'm sure they're, they're going up Century Boulevard, and I'm sure they're thinking, wow! Because I had recent visitors out of town, and, you know, they made comments about how it didn't look so nice. And, uh, that's what I'd like to see as part of this general plan process, to really clean up the, the major arterials. You've got that in the, where the sports entertainment is SoFi, Hollywood Park, Intuit Dome. But concentrate on those. I mean, because I think, yes, you can have a comprehensive plan, but sometimes it takes a long time to get, number one, a comprehensive plan put together. But if you start with little sections, uh, where you can improve, and in my opinion, it should be in the major arterial corridors, because that's what the, the, the visitors will see. So, um, I don't want it to look neglected anymore. I don't want people to think that Inglewood is dirty. I want it to spiff up, I want it to really show the efforts that you as planning staff, uh, have put in, uh, to help improve this. We as the Commission have helped also, but that's my two cents on, on the general plan process. You know, we've gotta spiff up the parts that the visitors, uh, will be seeing, and we've got major, major events coming in, and they should be able to see on first glance that Inglewood is a top-notch city. That's my Commission initiative.
Okay. Commissioner Rice? Welcome back. Before you get started, the, the census is that you have a lot of these projects going on. Not only did staff make the recommendation, but the Commissioners made the recommendation as well that you are taking us all out to dinner.
I'd absolutely love to, I love your company.
And you're footing the bill, that's...
I concur, Commissioner Trejo, about the city, and I think it's all revenue-driven. There's a lot going on in Inglewood. I drive every morning, 5:00 in the morning, just driving and seeing the crews working, and I commend you guys, um, Public Works, and they're out on the streets doing a lot of work. Perhaps with all of the entertainment going on and all the venues opening, maybe we have to do it twice a week instead of once a week. Uh, the downtown areas, every day, seven days a week, they're out there cleaning up at 6:00 in the morning. So I think it's just, um, a matter of organization, revenue, and, um, us taking it to the next level. Because ultimately, we have, um, I had a comment when, when this first came up, and all these, these items were gonna come on the agendas, that this is gonna overwhelm the planning commission. I think we, we, uh, we're three hours in right now, we covered, what, seven items? I mean, and heavy items, there were a lot of details in there. I don't know how exhausted everyone is and how much, how much it may have taken us out, but we do this once a month. And the more that we can carry six- and seven-item agendas, the quicker we can build the city. There's a lot of work to do. And this is a sacrifice and commitment from all of us, and, you know, I personally appreciate everyone doing this 'cause I know what it takes from us. But it's important we all signed up for this because we wanted to help our community, and I really appreciate all of you for doing that, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Fowler?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, on behalf of Councilwoman Gray, wanted to thank all of the residents that came out to her family day. It was very packed, uh, people had a good time. Uh, that was her first, and she is planning, uh, for next year, a little earlier this time. Uh, so, uh, the staff came, uh, to present next level. I hope it was successful, that you had a good crowd and some good contacts, uh, so that was helpful. A lot of vendors, um, everybody had a great time, so she wanted me to thank everyone. Uh, also, on September 14th, she will be having her, um... What do you call it? When you do the tre, uh...
Shredding.
Shredding, her shredding day at the Police Center, Community Center.
I-Cop Center.
Yeah, I-Cop Center, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and, uh, that is, uh, going to, you know, you, you think you only have one, but time we have one, it's almost like time runs over. People are saying, well, when are you gonna have another shredding day? Well, where were you the day we had the shredding day? So I guess we have to constantly do a good job about marketing that, uh, happening. It's from 9:00 AM to noon, only from 9:00 AM to noon on the 14th at the I-Cop Center. Uh, and with that, I hope everyone, uh, as Commissioner Cheryl Williams, Cheryl Williams said, Shaw Williams said, hydrate because, uh, COVID is back. Unfortunately, I know a lot of people, um, I know a lot of people who don't have it, and that's because they do hydrate, I think, and get your shot, if you haven't, get that vaccination. Uh, we have to be, uh, in good health as we go to the next level.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, um, first I wanna thank, um, the staff for putting everything together. I wanna concur with Commissioner Rice in regards to the items that we have before us. The, the more we have, the faster we can grow our city. Uh, you know, we're coming up, I think they're gonna do, the World Cup is coming up here pretty soon, if I'm not mistaken. So we wanna be prepared for that. So I can see that the city is growing, and it's, it's, it's a beautiful city. It's, uh, I've been here a while, I've been here since 73, so how long is that? That's a long time, uh... Yeah, wow, I didn't know it was that long. I shouldn't have said that, I should have kept that to myself. Wow. I'm just enjoying it, I, I appreciate the mayor and what he has done to the city. If you look at his video, it, he's, um, 008 or 006 or what? He's not 007, but, uh, he's, he did, he's doing a wonderful job. I appreciate, uh, the city council and the jobs that they're doing, and again, the staff. You guys are doing a tremendous job as well. Um, I have no further... That's it for me. You guys have a wonderful weekend, and I think your shredding is on the, and she's having her... Oh, yes, I wanted to make, make sure that when, I'm gonna make a statement, when people are coming to the mic to go for or against a project, that you are not advertising any political... You're not talking political about what you're running for. I, you can't do that here. So I'm gonna make, please help me, and you, Mr. Penn, as well, bring it to my attention that we cannot talk political candidacy or anything. This is not the arena for that. Okay, so I wanna make that perfectly clear, so we can't do that. Other than that, you guys are doing a tremendous job. Art, I haven't seen you in a while, it's good to see you again. Sean, you did a wonderful job. I mean, Sean is really getting smooth, isn't he? I mean, really? And Angel, you're the guy, man, I mean, Christine, she's the girl, I mean... You guys are doing a tremendous job. I don't know who stepped on my porch, but someone, and you guys have a little, a little car. That was you? Okay, 'cause my neighbor said there was a white guy on your porch. I said, really? I said, who was he? She said, he had a little car, so I, so now I know. Thank you, guys, appreciate you, guys. That, that's it. Meeting adjourned.